Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the city council regular meeting of Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at five thirty P. M. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dovi?
Here.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Here.
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Here.
We're going into closed session. City Attorney, can you please read the item aloud?
Sure, my pleasure, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss items three A and three B as listed on this evening's agenda.
Closed session. City Attorney, can you report out, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council has returned from closed session with no reportable action taken with respect to item three A and no discussion with respect to item three B.
If you could all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Nefolda and the invocation.
Okay, can all face the flag? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for the freedom to convene, to serve our city and to serve our residents. We just ask, this week has been a rough week, a lot of explaining to do to our children and our families, and we just ask that you give people comfort. Just take down the hate, take down the rhetoric, and just let people live. We just ask that you just be in all of our lives, be a blessing to us all, and we ask this in your special name. Amen. Is it on now? There we go. All right. I'd like to invite Wayne Signi up. Hi. The City of Los Alamos would like to recognize September as Hunger Action Month as part of a national campaign dedicated to raising awareness about food insecurity and inspiring action to end hunger in our communities. So I'd like for you to present that on behalf of the city, and if you'd like to say a couple words. Absolute clout.
Hi, everyone. My name is Wayne Signi, and I'm with Second Harvest Food Bank in Orange County, and we also are part of what's called the Orange County Hunger Alliance. And if you don't know, September is Hunger Action Month. And what we're doing is going to each of our city councils and receiving a proclamation from the city council to recognize Hunger Action Month. It's a little, it's particular special for me because I actually have three kids in the school district here. My oldest daughter is a sophomore volleyball player at Los Alamos High School, my younger daughter's at Oak, and my son's practicing soccer at Oak Middle School right here, right now. So it is, it is especially an honor to be here tonight. This is a great city, a very caring city. Hunger Action Month, you know, is an opportunity for us to educate the public on the reality of what we call food insecurity. In two thousand and twenty-five, we averaged, or in two thousand and twenty-five, there were three hundred and fifty-nine thousand people in the county of Orange who were experiencing food insecurity. Eighty-six thousand of those are children. And what we're seeing in the partner sites that we serve, that we deliver food on a daily basis, we're seeing nearly five hundred thousand visits. So hunger is definitely out there, but there's a lot of support in the community. And thank you to Los Alamos City Council for doing the proclamation, sorry, for giving us the proclamation. We appreciate it. If you want to get involved, we have a website, feedoc.org/hungeractionmonth. Thank you.
No, you can get one with your own camera app. Somebody do that for him. It's his, it's his fault.
We're supposed to submit the photos to prove that.
Prove it.
All right. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Claiborne. The stage is yours, sir.
All righty. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Next, we're gonna be the, Los Alamos Police Department recently had our two thousand and twenty-four annual awards ceremony, and I'm here tonight to share with you some of the recipients of those awards. And we're gonna start out with the Citizen of the Year Award. The Citizen of the Year Award is given to a citizen who provided an outstanding contribution to the department and/or the community by supporting policing efforts. Candace Cesaris is a property manager of an apartment complex here in the city of Los Alamos. She is a valued resident of our city and has served in her managerial role since two thousand and twenty-one. On October twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-four, officers responded to a critical incident that occurred in the parking garage of the apartment complex. It was a very dynamic incident in which officers needed to identify potential suspects and vehicles involved as quickly as possible. Dispatch contacted Candace for assistance with reviewing camera footage related to the incident. Even though she was at home, Candace did not hesitate to return to work to support the responding officers. She remained on-site late into the evening, patiently assisting the detectives with reviewing surveillance footage and providing every bit of information she could. Candace's dedication did not end there. In the days that followed, detectives returned to her office multiple times to continue the investigation. Each time Candace was professional, accommodating, and eager to help. Her strong knowledge of her community, keen attention to detail, and genuine commitment to safety were instrumental in advancing the investigation. Candace's collaboration with the Los Alamos Police Department was not relegated to this incident alone. She has long since established a rapport with the police department, doing more than her part to keep the residents of her complex safe. It is for these reasons that we, the Los Alamos Police Department, have selected Candace Cesaris as the Citizen of the Year.
Hello, everyone. I'm Candace. Thank you to the police department for giving me this award. I grew up here. I lived in Los Alamos since I was in sixth grade, and I have two kids that just graduated from the high school in the past couple of years. So it means a lot to me that the city is awarding this to me. It means a lot to me to keep the city safe, and as much as possible, I will be of assistance at any time. I'm the kind of the eyes and ears of the community, so I know it's helpful to have that information, and it means a lot to me to get this, especially since I grew up here. So thank you so much.
All right. Next up is gonna be Dispatcher of the Year. Dispatcher of the Year is a merit-based recognition honoring a dispatcher who consistently demonstrates exceptional proficiency and dedication to their craft. Kathy's expertise directly contributes to the safety and effectiveness of our department personnel, enabling them to perform their duties with confidence and support. Kathy plays a critical role in managing the dispatch schedule, skillfully navigating the challenges of scheduled vacancies and unforeseen vacancies. Her ability to proactively build and adjust schedules ensures seamless operations within the communications center. In addition to her daily responsibilities, Kathy also serves as the tactical dispatch supervisor overseeing all SWAT team call-outs and precision, with precision and composure. She regularly volunteers to work special events, representing WestCom with professionalism, dedication, and a positive attitude. Kathy's thirty-plus years of experience and unwavering commitment to WestCom and the West Cities that she serves, coupled with her accountability, operational excellence, and team-first mindset, are commendable and make her deserving of the two thousand and twenty-four Dispatcher of the Year. I'm waiting for Robert to bring you. Trying to make sure everybody's here. All right. Next up is gonna be Employee of the Year. Employee of the Year is a professional staff employee whose work performance and actions went above and beyond the call of duty, an employee who exceeds expectations which in turn helped the department meet its goals. Nicole Sayes serves in two key roles, training manager and community events specialist, and in both, she consistently goes above and beyond. She has improved our training systems, ensured compliance and readiness, and brought professionalism and efficiency to everything she does. She also plays a vital role in coordinating our community events where her attention to detail and calm, positive demeanor shine through. Even while balancing the demands of work and family, Nicole's dedication and leadership have left a lasting impact on our department and the community. Please join me in congratulating Nicole with the Los Alamos Police Department's two thousand and twenty-four Employee of the Year.
First, I'd like to thank, oops, excuse me, my family for all of their love and support, my husband, my two kids, my mom, and my sister. And just really want to thank the department, Chief Claiborne, my supervisor, Robert Acosta, for just giving me the responsibility and believing me, and just also my team. We're such a small agency, and I consider us all family, and we all work together as a team, and we all are out there just to accomplish one goal and serve our community. So thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have Volunteer of the Year. This year's Volunteer of the Year is Randy Smith. Randy's dedication, attitude, and performance have gone above and beyond expectations through his work in our special events, patrol checks, school foot patrols, car washing duties, and even dressing up as Santa Claus for our toy drive. Randy has shown exceptional commitment. His reliability, professionalism, and positive presence have greatly supported the department's mission and strengthened community trust. Please join me in congratulating Randy Smith as the two thousand and twenty-four Volunteer of the Year.
Well, this really is an honor for me to accept this award. I feel it a special opportunity to be here, to serve with the Los Alamos Police Department and the professional people that serve that department and also serve our city. It's just, I retired from the Edison Company. My wife said I need to get out of her hair, so, and our son works here also, and so he said, hey, Dad, why don't you join us? And I'm like, oh, okay. But I didn't realize it'd be such a wonderful experience. And so I thank the police department, I thank the city for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Now, we had a funny little moment during our awards ceremony that I feel obligated to share with all of you this evening, even though we very much enjoyed this moment. So these awards are actually awarded based on nominations that come from within the department. And Randy did not receive a nomination from his son. I am not saying that in an attempt to call him out, but it just goes to show you that everybody in the organization recognizes all the amazing work that Randy does, and we appreciate it, sir. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Officer of the Year. Officer of the Year is a police officer, corporal, or sergeant whose service, dedication, and teamwork went above and beyond the requirements of the job. They may have performed a difficult task in order to prevent a crime, protect the life and property, and/or apprehend a suspect. They may have consistently made community engagement a focal point during their unencumbered time. Detective Stephen Smith has had the following comments written in his evaluations. He consistently produces at an above-average volume of work. He, his productivity and consistency exceeds expectations for someone in his position and contributes significantly to the overall performance of the team. The following statements were made by his peers when asked. He's a dedicated dude who is always there for us. He is about as likable as a person as you can get. It makes me happy when I look at the schedule and I see he's my partner. Things that come to mind when I think of Steve. When the public thinks of a dedicated professional police officer, members of the command staff all agree that they are thinking of Detective Smith. He exemplifies our mission statement in working in partnership with the community to help make Los Alamos a better place. Two cases of note from two thousand and twenty-four. In October of two thousand and twenty-four, Detective Smith was assigned as the lead investigator in an attempted murder case. He canvassed the area, obtained video surveillance identifying the suspect's vehicle, and developed suspect descriptions. Despite uncooperative victims, he secured a statement from one in custody and pursued all the available leads. He submitted evidence for DNA analysis and is awaiting the results. Detective Smith's persistence and resourcefulness demonstrate his strong commitment to resolving the case. In December of two thousand and twenty-four, Detective Smith led a grand theft and elder abuse case where a suspect defrauded an elderly victim of thirty thousand dollars in cash and attempted to obtain another thirty-five thousand. Coordinating with patrol officers, he arranged surveillance while guiding the elderly victim through a controlled phone call, leading the, or leading to the arrest of the suspect who arrived to collect the second payment. His proactive efforts prevented further loss and demonstrated strong investigative skills, empathy, and dedication to protecting the most vulnerable members of our community. It is for these reasons and many more that we have selected Officer Stephen Smith to be the two thousand and twenty-four Officer of the Year.
Thank you for this. I'd like to thank my family and my partners. Wouldn't be able to get this award without great partners. I'm thankful for my chief, my leadership here. I'm thankful for the city and for this opportunity to serve here in this city. It's a, it's a great place to work, and I love it. So appreciate this. Thank you all.
Chief, did his dad nominate him?
Yes, he did not. But one thing I would like to point out is, is this is what happens when, you know, an amazing person ends up raising his children right. The fruit doesn't fall far from the tree. So thank you both. If I could get the Manukian family to come up to the front, please? Okay. And our last and final award is with great sorrow that I present. And I did not write anything for this award because I think this is the one that I don't need to. So we are here tonight to celebrate the life of Sarkis Manukian, who was a pillar in this community. He owned and ran Norm's Automotive, which has been, how many years has Norm's been? Almost forty years in the community. And Sarkis had a direct relationship with everybody involved in the police department. Not only did he end up working on the city vehicles, but he also worked on a lot of the personal vehicles of members of the police department. And when I knew I was gonna be doing this presentation, I started talking to more and more people, and the more I learned is that he was the most gracious man that you would ever meet. He would perform automotive repairs on vehicles for people in need without charging them. And he would do the same for the nonprofits in the city. And that just goes to show you the type of human being that he was. And he unfortunately was taken from us way too early, and we are here tonight just as a city and as a police department to do our best to try to share with the family that we're with you and a heavy heart, that he is not here, and that we will miss him, and that we cannot thank you enough for being able to share your family member with us for all the years that you did. And ma'am, would you like to come up and say a few words? You do not have to if you don't. Would your son possibly? It's up to you.
Well, we didn't have much time to prepare to say many words here, but all I can truly say is that we, there's been an outpour from the community of support and love, and everyone's been coming by the shop, and, sorry, it's hard. I guess in the simplest way I can put this is that the outpour of the community has really meant a lot to us, and everybody has just been telling us stories, coming and spending time with us, being super generous, giving us food, giving us gifts, and just giving us their time. And again, most importantly, giving us their stories about who my father was. And throughout all these years, I did have the privilege of working next to him for over fifteen years alongside my brother David and my uncles over here, Sean and Ed. And I never understood why he worked so hard. I never did. And finally, as I'm wearing his shoes, it kind of, I understand it now, and in a certain weird way, I'd never felt closer to him. And the shop basically was a means for him to provide for people, to give, and to just do the right thing. And I'm looking through all the documentation, I'm looking through previous work that he's done, and I cannot, from the bottom of my heart, I cannot find a single example of him doing somebody wrong intentionally or taking advantage of somebody. He really was that person. He helped families immigrate to the United States from Armenia. He gave them work, he gave them shelter, he gave them a direction. And they just don't make him like that anymore. They don't make people like that anymore. And I just, again, we, my family, my father in particular, serviced the community of Los Alamos for thirty-nine years, and upon hearing the news, my brother and I immediately came right back home from Austin. We moved out to Austin, Texas for a couple of years, and we had a life out there, business, houses, and again, the second we heard the news, first flight we came back, and we just, again, in wearing the shoes, we discovered that, we learned more about who my father was. we learned more about who my father was, and we learned that the shop is so much bigger than him, so much bigger than us, and it really is a pillar of the community, and just to be able to be in his shoes and to be able to provide the service and take care of people, it truly is a privilege, so, just wanted to say. Yes, um, and just, again, in closing notes, we just thank you all from the bottom of my hea- of our hearts, and... Yeah. We'll be, we'll be here every day, and we'll keep pushing, and we'll do the best we can every day, because that's what our father wanted us to do, so. So, thank you. This Sunday, um, it's the twenty-third, I believe? Twenty-first, uh, this Sunday, the twenty-first, from five-thirty to nine-thirty at Rush Park, um, eight-thirty. We'll be at Rush Park here in Rossmore, we'll be having a celebration of life to honor him, and we openly invite everybody to please come. We do have a RSVP on, uh, Facebook currently, so you can go to the Norm's Automotive Facebook, and you can find the RSVP there, and again, everybody, you're all more than welcome to come, we'd love to have you, and just can't thank the Los Alpide enough, and can't thank the community enough, and just thank you guys. Thank you.
So, the Los Alamitos Police Department will be, will be presenting the chief's award to Sarkis Manukian. Thank you for your unwavering dedication to the Los Alamitos Police Department and the community of Los Alamitos. You embody integrity, generosity, and exceptional character. You will truly be missed.
If anybody in the back would like to come fill in some seats. Okay. We'll be moving on to oral communication. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. This is the appropriate time to come forward to speak on any agenda item. Tonight's agenda includes two public hearings. Comments will be called for those hearings at the appropriate time. Comments will not, will not be called individually for items not listed as public hearings. Request that everyone fill out a speaker card or sign in at the podium sheet. This allows staff to contact you for follow-up if needed. Any public comments? All right. We're gonna close public comments. Updates from the mayor. A lot going on this last month. Uh, I was, um, honored to attend the opening of the Griffin Center, which is the second gymnasium at Los Alamitos High School. It is absolutely beautiful, state-of-the-art weight room, two gyms, concessions. Um, it's going to serve this community well. Uh, my sons played basketball in high school, and their practices were at 5:00 AM in the morning, because there wasn't enough gym's time. So, this is going to, uh, free up everybody's alarm clock a little bit. Um, I also attended the change of command from Lieutenant Colonel Dan Fox to Lieutenant Colonel Satelli. Uh, it was a great change of command, um, bittersweet. Uh, Fox has become a friend of the city's, uh, very visible within the city. He is now on his way to San Antonio, and hopefully back one day here. So, we'll see, uh, but we are in good hands with, uh, Colonel Satelli, um, who was just carrying on the torch that Fox had already started. And then, this last weekend, very, very busy weekend, uh, we started with Serve La Sal, um, which we had a tremendous, um, showing of that, including all of our sunburst boys, uh, which was great, and we, uh, descended up on the city and did all kinds of service, uh, projects, whether it be at the parks or at the some of the nonprofits. I personally, uh, did yard work at, um, a senior's house. I don't do my own yard work, so this was quite a stretch for me. Uh, we had Mayor Protem Dobie, uh, carve a bonsai tree into the shape of a swan. So, uh, that is, she's up, she's up for hire.
No.
Uh, Councilmember Lowe did weeding and tall shrub trimming for his height, and, uh, Councilmember Nefolda, he spruced up Laurel Park with his children, which was great. Um, everybody was just in great moods. You know, you, you can't be upset when you're, when you're giving back, um, however that looks. Uh, that afternoon, I was able to host the Labradette family over at Koinkidinky Labradette Park. Uh, there were about sixty, from what I hear now, of just family and friends. They flew in from Hawaii, Sacramento, all over the place. Found out that everybody in Los Alamitos is related somehow. Um, Marilyn Poe is a Labradette, didn't know that. Um, but it was just a great, it was a family reunion, and a lot of, uh, people that showed up from their past. Uh, we even had the previous football coach, who coached before Don Barnes did. Um, he was there giving up stories and everything, so it was just, it was a great, great afternoon. And then we continued on to celebrate La Sal, which is always one big party. Uh, we were able to honor our veterans, which was tremendous. Um, that list is getting smaller and smaller, hopefully we can pump that up, but they were, um, just thrilled to be recognized and honored. Um, let's see, uh, I was elected for the League of California Cities District One Rep for the OC Division, and, uh, for some reason, I have been asked to speak at the League of California Cities Conference in October on a session called Small Cities, Building Connections, and Sharing Solutions. And what we're trying to do at the league is form a small cities member group, so we can all steal each other's ideas and commiserate with each other. Um, the number of cities below population of thirty thousand is sixty-seven percent in California. So, um, we all have to learn how to be really creative and wear many, many hats, and so I'm looking forward to this opportunity. And then, some upcoming events. Uh, the American Legion mural unveiling, um, at the American Legion Post 716 in partnership with the City of Los Alamitos Revive Program. We'll be unveiling a new mural honoring the men and women who have served our nation. This collaborative effort, project, is a part of the city's effort to beautify and vitalize public and private spaces. This mural prominently displayed facing Florista Street commemorates all branches of the United States Armed Forces, and the unveiling will be on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, beginning at 1:00 PM. Um, I did get a sneak peek of the mural, and it is museum-worthy, it is absolutely beautiful. Uh, we have our next Nights on Pine on Thursday, October ninth, to enjoy a night of live music from the classic rock band The Emperors, family activities, and community fun nights. This free family-friendly, free, family-friendly event is a perfect way to enjoy live music under the stars while celebrating the spirit of playing local and shopping local in our city. And our new local stage, we're gon- we're proud to announce the launch of a brand-new community program on L A TV and the city's YouTube channel, the Los Alamitos Local Stage. It's a platform to highlight the voices of our community, giving local organizations, partners, and leaders the opportunity to share updates, programs, and upcoming events directly with the residents. The inaugural episode will feature special guests from the Recreation and Community Services Department, the Los Alpitas Department, and me. Okay. Uh, turn, tune in starting October sixth as we share exciting news, important updates, and opportunities for community involvement. And you're invited to attend the Elevate Women's Conference, sponsored by Memorial Cor- Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach. This event will take place on Wednesday, October first, from eight-thirty to one at the Los Alamitos Community Center. It's designed to inspire personal and professional growth. The Elevate Women's Conference will offer attendees practical tools and strategies to support their journey toward becoming their best selves. Pre-registration for this event is required, as there is limited seating, only a few spots left, and there will not be any registration at the door. Then we have our trunk-or-treat. Los Alamitos Recreation and Community Center Services Department would like to invite the community to attend the Fourteenth Annual Memorial Care Miller's Children and Women's Hospital Long Beach Trunk-or-Treat, presented by Southland Credit Union. The free event will take place on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Little Cottonwood Park. This spectacular event provides a safe space for families to celebrate Halloween. Guests will have the opportunity to participate in children's costume contex- contests, pick their own pumpkin from the free pumpkin patch sponsored by Southland Credit Union, play carnival games, win prizes, visit trunks for candy, shop at vendor booths, jump on moon bounces, ride the spooky train, enjoy the sensory calming activity area, visit the beverage garden, benefiting the Los Alamitos Community Foundation, and more. Families are encouraged to come dressed in their Halloween costumes to enter the ever-so-popular costume contest. The costume contest has five divisions, ages zero to three, ages four to seven, ages eight to twelve, and the family division, and the pet division. Dogs must be leashed. First, second, and third prizes will be available for each division. Then we have the Los Alamitos Recreation and Community Services Department would like to invite all city of Los Alamitos residents to participate in the 2025 Halloween Decorating Contest. Registration is free and required to participate in the contest. Judging will take place on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, between 7:00 PM and 9:00 PM. To ensure your home is being judged, please visit the city's website at cityoflosalamitos.org to complete the registration form. Judges will select three winners in each of the Los Alamitos neighborhoods for the following divisions: spookiest, most creative, and most fall festive. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for your announcements.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to actually have the chief give us an update on Alert OC. Chief?
Zoom in on that. All right, on Wednesday, September seventeenth, 2025, Los Alamitos, in partnership with the county, will conduct its annual mass notification test utilizing the Alert OC platform. During this test, an emergency alert will be sent to all registered mobile numbers, landlines, and email accounts within the system. This annual test is an important reminder of the value of Alert OC in keeping our community informed and prepared during emergencies. We strongly encourage you and your team members to confirm your registration within Alert OC before the test date. If you have not registered yet, please visit www alertoc.gov to sign up.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I just would say that, again, I know that there's a lot of things that we ask people to sign up for, apps and what have you, but this is probably the most important thing that people can do for their families to ensure that they're getting the information that they need in a real critical incident, that they're receiving those updates in a timely manner, so. I don't think we've linked it directly with our app. We'll have to see if we can actually do that. There's the QR code, yeah.
We'll get that thing, Karen.
And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, now on to warrants. Per the council's accelerated warrant policy, staff will note questions and follow-up after the meetings. No questions were received regarding tonight's warrants. Are there any new questions for follow-up before the next city council meeting? Okay, can I get a motion in a second, please? Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Would anybody like to pull an item? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move him.
So, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we're going to item twelve, our public hearing for the Master Fee Schedule Update, fiscal year 2025, 2026. Um, and I'll turn this over to staff for a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will turn it over to Dr. Note here in a second, but I just wanted to mention that, uh, cost recovery is an important part of any city organization, uh, ensuring that we are keeping pace with, uh, what exactly the costs of delivering services are, and ensuring that we're not passing those fees along to our residents, that we're actually ensuring that developers and people that are using these specialized services actually, uh, pay for that, so that our residents do not have to. And, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to... Craig, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council staff, and residents. I'm representing the Master Fee Schedule for updating. Uh, before going to that, we've got to back-
Wait a minute, your mic.
Can you hear me now?
No.
How's this? Okay. Uh, before we go into the study, a bit of background. An RFP was issued on June sixteenth, 2022. Uh, this council entered into a contract, uh, awarded to, um, Wildan Financial Services on September sixth, 2022. The initial work was concluded in early twenty-three. Uh, pending final completion of the study, the Master Fee Schedule was updated on May twentieth, twenty-four in accordance with the CPI adjustment. For 2025, an estimate of the potential fee increases was incorporated in the budget, uh, however pending final approval. And revenue estimates from the final cost recovery report will be adjusted during the mid-year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six review. The Cost Recovery, also known as User Fees, study focused on the cost of the city's services, as staff currently provides them with existing known or reasonably anticipated service and staff-level needs. Results in the general description of the approach and methods will then city staff use to determine the recommended fee schedule. The study involved identifying existing and potential new fees, restructuring fee schedules, data collection, and analysis, orientation and consult- consultation, quality control, communication, and presentations, and calculation of individual service cost fees or program cost recovery levels. Tonight, we have, um, an expert here from Tony, from Wildan Financial Services, Mr. Tony Thrasher, Senior Project Manager, who will present the Cost Recovery Draft Report.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. I'm Tony Thrasher with Wildan, the project manager for the User Fees Study. Now, let's go ahead and dive right in, right? So, starting off with the scope of the study. So, we're here to talk about user fees. These are operational costs provided services, the costs of which reside within your general fund. So, scope of the study, uh, it's, most of the departments are involved with this sort of process, so you can see kind of the lists up there, but keep in mind, we're talking about the user fees. Uh, not, we're not including taxes, impact fees, or anything else that's not an operational cost-provided service. So, uh, because they're operational costs provided, the data that we're using is budget data, staffing structures, uh, right? So, where are the positions and costs located to provide your services? We build up, uh, cost layers to calculate fully burden hourly rates, uh, through including all that, including predict, uh, productive or billable hours to account for when staff is on-site, as well as contract costs that's involved with providing your services. All throughout the entire process, when we're calculating overheads, calculating hourly rates, and the way that we incorporate those costs along with time data or any adjustments to your schedule, it has to be a fully collaborative operation with your staff and your departments, because each fee schedule needs to reflect each city's cost providing service to the public. Right? So, throughout the entire process, from every step and phase, it was integral that we worked with your staff and your departments to get to the conclusion. So, here's kind of the summary steps of the, the model itself, or, sorry, the, the study itself. We start off with model development, where we want to collect all that data to build up the model to calculate overheads, as well as overheads, or, sorry, overheads and hourly rates, uh, so that we can identify for each unit of services being provided, what is the cost involved? Right? So, that's when we meet with the departments to start revising the fee schedules to make sure they reflect how services are providing, uh, and going to be provided moving forward. That's adding- That's adding new fees, removing obsolete fees, changing the fee structures to make sure they reflect how services provided so that we can get to a final fee schedule to then collect that cost information to get to full cost calculations for all your services. Then we shift to the next part where we compare those to the current fees to identify what current subsidies there are, as well as start talking about suggested or recommended cost recovery for your services. And then, once we have that model finalized, we create a report around that, and then we start to bring it forward. So, we had the committee meeting prior, and then ultimately, you take it to a public hearing where you can kind of hear, see, and make a decision whether or not to adopt the fees. So, each city has hundreds of fees, hundreds of user fees, right? So, this is meant, these slides are meant to kind of be a synopsis, a synopsis of what the study found, as well as the recommendations as a result. So, starting off with administrative services, it's a mixture of business and others set by state. I'm going to look over it instead of looking up. It's a time-based cost analysis for all the user fees they're in. Analysis did find the current fees are not in line with the cost of providing services, and so there's a suggested increase for three fees, and you'll see some examples on these slides as well. So, like, the TOT administration fee would go up to $12 from $10. One new fee would be added, which is a credit card processing fee. It's pass-through cost of 3.5%. And then, go ahead, and then for public works, we use a program cost analysis. So, identifying all the services it takes to provide those, or sorry, all the costs it takes to provide all the services on your public works fee schedule, and identify where your cost recovery is, and then adjust those cost recoveries to get to, to identify what full cost recovery is, and that is what the recommendation is to get to full cost recovery. And there was a time-based cost analysis for five fees because they're brand-new fees, and so we need to identify the individual positions they're in. So, SB 9, ticket trailers, stage rental, traffic control setup, example there, and those are recommended to be set at full cost recovery. For building, it was a program cost analysis as well. That is currently operating around 72% cost recovery. The recommendation is just to up that a bit to get to 80% cost recovery for that. For planning, it was a time-based cost analysis, found the current fees are not in line with providing services. Full cost recovery is recommended for those services, and that would mean an increase for 31 fees. There's some examples there. Three new fees would be added for affordable housing applications, specific plan, and sidewalk vending. For police, it was a time-based cost analysis that found the fees are currently not in line with providing services, right? A little repetitive there, right? Now, for this one, it's not recommended to go to full cost recovery. Some, sorry, the recommendation here is to go to, it's a maximum increase of 25% or full cost, whichever is less, so you don't go over full cost. And the suggested changes are an increase to 17 fees. There's some examples there. For recreation, it's a different kind of story. So, under Prop 26, they fall under a different category of usage fee, and so a lot of those are kind of used to government facilities. Those should be set based off market factors, usage characteristics, policy goals, things of that nature. We do a cost recovery analysis as well to show that, you know, you're not earning a profit on any of your services, currently operating around 29% cost recovery, which is actually pretty good nowadays, post-COVID. So, nowadays, we kind of see that range in the realm of like 10 to 30%, so you're kind of on the top end of that. The department does set its fees based off kind of cost recovery goals, programs. Availability of services does change throughout the year, and so they have more ability to adjust those fees as needed based off what's available. And so, the cost recovery targets have been updated within the fee schedule to reflect the suggested cost recovery for those areas. Now, here's a revenue change projection based off the average kind of fee change for those areas. So, you can see, I won't read it off, but the bulk would come through the public works, and then total of 326,000 would be the estimated revenue based off those changes there. Note, it does not include revenue effective kind of new fees or effects of deposits because that's largely unknown. Deposit fees recover actual costs, so as time is spent, you log it to that deposit. And for new fees, without knowing the actual activity or projected activity, then we can't really make a projection on that. So, that's kind of where I started off. The costs of these services reside within your general fund. So, when you subsidize those services, it impacts your general fund's ability to spend those general tax dollars on community or general benefits such as public safety, such as council initiatives, things of that nature. General standard is when you are conveying a private benefit, to charge 100% of the full cost. And so, you can see, especially with development, that is a recommendation to go to full cost recovery for those. But we've never worked with, the city doesn't have some level of subsidy in their fee schedule. So, you do see that within your community services, or some of that within your police as well, right? We don't see any of the suggested fees as impacting any participation rates, and you also are comparable to your neighboring organizations as well, or your neighboring agencies as well, right? We do recommend the city utilize an annual CIP factor or an inflationary factor to keep up with your costs as time goes on because you don't do these studies every year. So, costs tend to go up while your fees stay as-is, and then do a comprehensive analysis every five years with some specific notes for building and planning to keep an eye on those more specifically to ensure that you're getting cost recovery moving forward with those as well. And I'm here to answer any questions as well as staff.
So, Mayor, if I can too, I just wanted to say that this is one of the next steps that the Finance Department has taken in order to make sure that our financial house is in order. Obviously, building a structure out there where we were not ensuring that we're taking in for what exactly the cost of the services that we're putting out at the end of the day. And I do, I revert back to this all the time, that any time that we are subsidizing a fee, that money does have to come from somewhere. So, the residents would be paying for anything that we are not collecting 100% cost recovery on.
Any questions from up here?
I got two.
Okay.
The first one, the 3.5% for credit cards, is that across the board? Because I know typically, that's why most people don't want to take AMEX because their credit card process, it can be a little higher. Where did the 3.5 come from? Is that average standard?
Right, so for most cities, and this typically happens, if you don't have a system that determines that individually, can charge it on the fly for each one of those, usually have to come up with a fee calculation and pass that through on average. And so, looking at the amount of credit card charges you have and the revenue that's associated with those, it comes up with a 3.5% average. So, you unfortunately do have to kind of average that so that the city recovers its costs on whole.
And then, my second question, I don't know if it's for you, or if it would be for you, but I know you mentioned an annual looking at especially planning and building. Is there any way to tie it so that we look at it before these RENA numbers come out and we have to be prepared for the planning and building anyway, or is that something that was already factored?
Well, we definitely look at what's going to be coming down the pipe in terms of RENA. So, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is we're going to have to do it again and continuously do this every couple of years to make sure that we stay not only in line with what our costs are, but we want to make sure that we're also taking a look at what's happening around us and in the economy so that if we need to adjust anything, we can. So, it'll be an ongoing process.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure if you're the best person for this, but I was curious, when was the last time we did this?
I believe that we did it, it was prior to either Craig or my being here.
I think it's at least 10 years.
Yeah. That actually lies part of the problem here is that while, and I will say this, and credit to the, to the team that was here before, but one of the things that Mr. Thrasher said was continuing to include that CPI increase each year, it has allowed us to keep pace. While we're not exactly matched up, we're not as far off as cities that don't do that. And so, whereas in those cities, you can find a 25, 35% increase when you go five years without adjusting your fees. By doing it the way that we're doing it with that CPI increase each year, we've been able to keep pace. But this is a nice reset to put us kind of in a, hey, this is the organization that we have today, and this is what it would cost to operate.
Thank you.
One of the questions I had was, the slide showed that we're upgrading our TOT from $10 to $12. Why only $2? Why not three or four or five?
So, that's based off of, in administration, just as police, there was a 25% limit that was on the fee increase on those, and so it just, it fell in that that ends up being, rounding to the dollar. That's the 25% increase.
What would be full recovery?
For that one?
$26.21. $26.21.
Wow, okay. Thank you. And then I had, I had another question. You had briefly mentioned on alarm, alarm systems. Can you talk, can you clarify that a little bit more?
Sure, as far as what it applies to and how that, how that works?
Yes.
I'm going to have to ask staff exactly how that process is.
Okay, I have no reference point for it.
As far as alarms on file, so if a business in the city has an alarm that reports to the police department for monitoring their activity, they have to keep a file, an alarm on file, so we know who to notify in case of alarm when the activation goes off. If we get false alarms again and again and again, because they have faulty systems, then we can end up charging them back for all the false alarm calls.
Is that just for alarm systems with copper lines, or does that apply to digital alarm systems as well?
I believe it applies to both. Does it not correct? Yes, both.
Yeah, we have a digital one, and it-
So, if someone's got a Ring camera, but if the police department's notified?
So, no, it would, if it's just a Ring camera on your home, that would not be registered with the city. So, if you own a business and you have an alarm on your business that somebody is monitoring, when that, the wind blows and the alarm goes off, or somebody breaks in and the alarm goes off, they're going to notify dispatch, and we will have a response to that. Whereas, if you have a Ring camera on your home, we're not going to know unless you were to call and let us know.
So, the alarm fee is for sending someone-
Correct. It's having the, having us have your information on file so that we can then have a response based on an activation of that alarm.
Thank you.
And that fee exists in every city.
And that's for residents and businesses, because I know we renew ours every year.
Correct.
Yeah. Anything else? Great job on this. I kind of geeked out on the spreadsheet yesterday and saw that we virtually had everything at full cost recovery with the exception of park and rec, but those are things that we want to be able to subsidize so our residents can afford to do all the wonderful programs that we have here. I did have a couple of questions. There was probably about 10 or 12 items that we were subsidizing. I'm not so worried about the ones that was like a 1% subsidy, but there were some, and I think a lot of it probably has to do with the 25% or that by law, we're only allowed to charge so much. One of my questions was on the bicycle registration. We charge a dollar, and the full cost is $24.99. Why charge it all if we're trying to encourage participation?
Well, so, I'll start off, right? So, we do see this fee common in many cities. There's usually a very small nominal charge. It's kind of to just get in, but you don't want to set it so high that you don't get participation. So, at $1, it's typically not going to be disincentive, and actually is a very good incentive to then, you know, so it can be, you know, logged and tracked and that sort of thing.
Okay, are we getting participation?
Chief, you want to take that one?
If I had to estimate, I would say we probably get minimal to no participation. Can you aware if we get, yeah. It's just something that we do so that if somebody were to come and steal your child's bike, we could easily identify it by putting a marker on there. It's just something that, that cities have-
Right.
-that typically is not taken part in.
For e-bikes?
Correct. For any bike. Bicycle or e-bike or otherwise.
Okay. And then, the other one I was looking at is we subsidize, it was PD 25, about 54% for the handicap parking violation sign-off. Why are we subsidizing tickets?
That's because of the 25%.
Why are we subsidizing tickets?
Oh, so-
I think our goal there is to get up to full cost as quickly as possible, but the limit, it only allows us to grow so much in a certain period of time.
Is that our policy or that the law?
I believe that that's, you want to take that one? That's probably better.
I will, yeah. Yeah, so you can go full cost. If you identify an item in here you'd like to go full cost, full cost recovery on, you can make that as part of an amendment, as part of any action you take.
Because I'm assuming this is for people parking in handicap spots?
So, 25 is violation sign-off. So, that's if they got a violation, and there's, they're a, through the process, they can get it signed off as that they are not in violation of it, then that's what it would be.
And we're paying for 54% of that? Just a thought.
Yeah, so it's not the violation itself, it's the sign-off of the ticket. So, somebody ends up getting one, tinted windows, whatever, and then when it can get it signed off, it would be the fee for that.
Okay. But that's something we're going to be moving towards? Wink, wink.
I think our goal is to actually get to 100% cost recovery on everything. It's just a question of, you know-
Right.
-time.
Okay. And then, we went over the alarms, and then the reports for PD 2, we charge a dollar a page, it looks like, and our full cost is $59.98.
Right, so I'll speak a bit on that. So, especially for the reports, you can't charge for redaction. So, if there's anything involved with, say, you know, public records request, you can only charge for the duplication cost. So, whenever you're talking about it in your reports, you typically want to be more cautious and more conservative and charge a lesser amount on those unless, I'll let staff speak on that.
So, we currently are in the process of doing research of adding body-worn cameras, which will come with a redaction software to reduce that cost on our end.
I didn't, I forgot about redaction with PD. That makes absolute sense. Okay. Yeah, that's all the questions I had. It looks like we raised our rates anywhere between 12 and 25%. I think that's reasonable, and we're still be able to subsidize the important stuff in park and rec, so everybody can enjoy that. So, yeah, that ends my questions. So, this is, it's a public hearing, isn't it? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for public comments. Anybody that wants to speak on this item can come up, and you get three minutes per speaker. You don't count. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for comments and request a motion in a second, please. I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. And where are we next? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thrasher. Okay, the next is discussion item B, or public hearing B, 2025 Building Standards Code and Fire Code Adoption. I'll turn this over to staff. You're asking the attorney to do building codes?
I'm knowingly giving the mic to a lawyer.
Yeah, I would-
We pay him by the hour?
Yeah, so I think, I think we had the initial introduction and presentation of this item at our previous meeting. Typically, when you adopt ordinances, we would have the first reading and then come back for the second reading without a public hearing, but the state law that applies here where we're adopting building standards codes by reference requires that we have the first introduction and then actually have the public hearing at the second meeting. This is the triennial update of the Building Standards Code, so it's the Building Code, Fire Code-
Yes.
-Plumbing Code, Wild Land Interface Code, everything that the Building Department would use to plan, check, propose developments as it comes into the city. The state updates its Title 24 Building Standards Codes, and those will become effective in January irrespective of whether or not the city takes action to incorporate them by reference and make them our building standards codes. What we do every time as we go through this process, however, is make local amendments that are recommended by our building official and/or the Orange County Fire Authority to make sure that certain amendments are made that will reflect the local geologic and characteristics of our community. So, to, you know, with respect for fire, for instance, we have certain vegetation management requirements or building hardening requirements that we impose at the local level. So, that's a very broad overview of the discussion we had when this item was introduced. Between Ron and I, I'm sure we can answer any questions you may have, but procedurally, we are required to open the public hearing and see if anyone would like to speak on this item before taking the final vote. And I'm pleased to report that I will not have to read the title of these ordinances again at the second meeting.
Oh, I think you will. All right, I'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing, and since we have a shy group, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Our first reading was at our August meeting, but I'll open it up for any questions from the dais here. And hearing none. Can I get a motion? So, you don't have to read it? Are you sure?
I'm not.
No, you're not happy.
I'm willing to do it.
No, we, you charge us by the word, no, you're not. And football's on. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
All second.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Council comments. I'll start with Councilmember Hibbert.
Thank you. We've got the Heights Beach Air Show coming up October three through five. If you're interested in that or more information, their website you could visit is PacificAirShowUSA.com. I also attended the grand reopening for the family plumbers about a month ago and got to celebrate all they've been doing in and around this community. And as many of you know, they've been, they're a family business, so I'm biased. My family is celebrating our seventy-fifth anniversary in business. So anytime there's a mom or dad and, and the kids involved, I'm a big fan of that. I also attended the Change of Command Ceremony for Colonel Fox. I had a bit of a schedule conflict, so I popped in before the ceremony to express my gratitude to Colonel Fox for all he's done in this community for the past two years. And if you're not familiar, District Five, the district that I represent, shares a significant portion of the border with the base. So anytime there's an issue, when I first joined council, it was the drainage ditch. For years, it had not been maintained, long before Colonel Fox shows up. So I was getting complaints about rodents, possible flooding, things like that. So although the base is almost entirely in the district I represent, I have no jurisdiction over there. So I really appreciate Colonel Fox, because after several residents' concerns, he ended up bringing some heavy equipment out there and cleared that up. He also addressed, there was an issue over in Parkwood, again, before Colonel Fox was here. Somebody had, on the base, had bumped into a cinder block wall, caused damage to the cinder block wall. And the HOA president contacted me and asked if there's anything that I can do. So I contacted Colonel Fox, and he was able to make that HOA hole on the expenses to repair that, that cinder block wall. So I wanted to share a couple of those examples, because Colonel Fox didn't just oversee the operations on the base. He was really involved in, in the community, down to cinder block walls and clearing out drainage ditches. So he will definitely be missed. This past week, I had the opportunity to attend the nine-eleven, nine-eleven remembrance event at Fire Station Two here on Green. And before the ceremony, I was asking the firemen to tell me where they were on that, that morning. I remember where I was. And it was humbling to hear these guys. One of the guys was telling me that he was in high school. He was going to Los Al High. And he remembered in great detail where he was, so that small event, though, gosh, twenty-four years ago, it's still, everyone could remember with great detail, detail exactly where they were. So thank you to the gentlemen over at Fire Station Two. This past Friday, I also attended the high school's football game where many first responders were honored. And I just want to say, Chief, just for a second, thank you for taking the time to plan that out. And it makes me emotional, because we have a base here in town, but we don't do a lot to honor first responders. And we've got the Heroes Event once a year, but that event with the flyover, the video, the guys like Major Voo running on, running onto the field with, with the guys, is very emotional for me. And I don't think I was, I don't think that was unique for me. So thank you for taking the lead on that, and I hope we see it again next year. And I want to end my comments by acknowledging the assassination of the political activist Charlie Kirk, the mayor briefly mentioned earlier at the top of the meeting. That this past week has, there's been a lot going on. I want to extend my condolences to the Kirk family and make it very clear that I condemn all forms of political violence. If you, if me, if we disagree with someone, I encourage you to speak to those you disagree with. I encourage you to engage in more conversation. We may never see eye to eye with that person or that group, but it will help humanize the person on the other side of the table. In Matthew twenty-two, Jesus says, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your mind." This is the first and greatest commandment. And the second is like it, love your neighbor as yourself. And I want to say, if the death of Charlie Kirk has impacted you and you're wanting a Bible, to contact me and I will get you one. Thank you.
Councilmember Nefolda.
I have nothing to report.
Even at Laurel Park? Okay. All right, Councilmember Lowe.
Sure. I just wanted to say congratulations to all the city staff, because I think it took all the city staff to put on Celebrate Los Al. So it was a great event, as well as police and fire on that. So that was a wonderful event, coming off of Concerts on Pine the Thursday before. So those are great events. And Celebrate Los Al just gained momentum that whole night. So it was really cool to see, and see everybody out there, so that's it, thanks.
Mayor Proton Doby.
Okeydoke. So I went to my mosquito and vectors meeting. And I want to just remind everybody, iterate again, that all of the updates that I receive are posted to our website and our social media. One that I will share out is there were mosquito samples that were infested with West Nile virus. They were found in our city. But an inspector has already been sent out to look for any breeding and to check for unknown sources. They post posters whenever they come out and they find anything that they want to bring to the attention to the residents. They will put posters around the area, so those are already being taken care of. And if there is, so they don't just come one time and they find them one time and then they, you know, drop bombs. They come out, they check, and then they come out and they check again. And if they come out and they check again and there's still the positive West Nile virus mosquitoes, then they will send out the treatment teams. So I would like to advise, admonish, encourage everybody right now that if you are out during mosquito feeding time, it's dusk to dawn, mosquito repellent, not just bug spray. Mosquito repellent, and then you want to wear longer, I know it's hot, but longer sleeves and longer pants if you're going to be outside dusk and dawn. All righty, and then a couple of events that I went to is a redistricting webinar. And what I have charged the agency that hosted the webinar with, it's ACCOC. I am a executive board member of that agency, is to give us a fact sheet. Something that kind of very specifically says, this is what yes means. This is what no means. Because I don't know that if it's just off of who's asking you to say yes or no, that you're going to get much headway. But most people, if you can make it very clear and very concise that this is exactly what this means, I believe that you get more traction. So if and when that is produced, I will submit it to my colleagues and to the staff and see about getting access to that documentation out to folks. I also went to the Griffin Center ribbon cutting, and it is an absolutely spectacular center. I thoroughly enjoyed the tunnel that they created for everybody to run through or dance through, whichever your preference was. And I think one of the most spectacular features besides the weight room with branded weights was they have this huge like Jumbotron thing that face, it's the new scoreboard. Absolutely spectacular. And there's access to more restrooms, which can be a big deal, especially on a high school campus. I went to my OCOG board meeting, and one of the highlights for that agency is we are hiring a new executive director. So that'll be exhilarating. I attended my SCAG meeting, and in that one, I just kind of fussed about the presentations that they had us sit through, because if anybody knows me, got to make it worth my time. I also went to the JFTB Change of Command Ceremony and met with the new base commander. And I look forward to working with him. But what I significantly enjoyed is, I always love the camaraderie of like military first responders. It's like, y'all got your own gangs, for lack of a better term. And just to see everybody rally, not just around Daniel Fox, but with Colonel Satelli. Like, he's already been embraced. They're like, all right, dude, you're one of us now. We're going to take you under our wing, we're going to get out there and we're going to protect you from those, what did he call us? Persistent? From those persistent city folk? Persistence is a good thing. I was also able to walk over and enjoy the nine-eleven remembrance ceremony at Station Two. And they very honorably hosted us, so thank you, Commander Covey, for your people, because they did an exceptional job. Even gave a tour. And in the midst of that tour, there was an alarm that went off. And then I was invited to go out on a call, and I'd never been on a call. So I got to put the headset on, I learned some of the nicknames for some of the guys. So I was, I was over the moon, I'm going to walk over all the time now. Don't, don't tell them, just let it be a surprise. I was at Serve Los Al. I typically show up to do windows, because I've gotten really good at it. But they dispatched me to a home where the woman is a diligent gardener. I am not. So people are, oh, Tanya cut a swan bush. That woman would just grab a bushel of her greenery and say, cut here, now cut here. And she brought out a swan, and it was our inspiration piece. And it sat right where you could see where, she's like, see, doesn't do this. So needless to say, I am now a professional, but only for her. And only during Serve Los Al. So no, I am not for hire, and you don't want me to kill your plants anyway. Also, we went to, well, you know what? They had a son in there. And they invited us into their home because the wife is a painter, beautiful work. But he was like, you know what? Why are you here for free? Why don't they pay you? They should pay you. You're like the, the mayor somebody. I said, well, Fran, if I were doing this for money, I'd be remiss, because that's not what service is. Service is a matter of your heart. And with that being said, you couldn't pay me enough to come and pull weeds in a yard that's not mine. It makes my heart full to come and to see the way that your parents are appreciative. They thanked us until we drove off. They were so thankful for just the effort. So it made me proud to be able to say I make one seventy-four oh nine every two weeks. And then we culminated everything with the Celebrate Los Al event and with a veterans' recognition, which is always amazing, because I think that sometimes they forget how amazing they are. And it is always an honor to give honor where it's due. And to be able to shake the hands of people that, you know, it says the, what is it? The land of the free, home of the brave. It's the land of the free because of the brave. And to look someone in their eyes and remind them that it's their bravery that ensures that I remain free is always beautiful for me. And I did pop in at the Concert on Pine. The music was wonderful. And ended today with a ribbon cutting at Labyrinth Park. So anybody that lives near that park, pop on over. They have a jackleg mirror go around, nobody's going to fly off of it. So I probably wouldn't have signed off on that particular model. And we will be working on Seroptimus Park, so stay tuned for updates on Seroptimus Park. And that's all I've been up to lately.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, the city council will adjourn at seven eighteen P.